Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am Sean O'Brien. I'm the town moderator. And welcome to our special town meeting. We have 133 voters present. The time is 7:03. Folks, can we come down? There's seating up front if you want to fill it in. Again, folks in the back, there's two empty rows up front with additional seating. Ladies and gentlemen, I am honored to call this special town meeting to order. Today is November 16th, 2021. The time is 7:03. We have a quorum present. The tellers have been sworn. They are Bruce Skerritt and Paul Armstrong. The warrant has previously been declared and properly noticed with the constable's return of service. As tradition dictates, we waive the reading of the warrant. Troop 49 will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone all rise?
Whenever you're ready, gentlemen.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. How about a round of applause for the troop? At this point in time, I'd like to take a moment of silence for all those who have passed, all those in Kingston who've gone through tough times with the COVID virus and everything else that's going on. So at this time, I'd just take a moment of silence, please. The rules for town meeting. Town meeting is run per town meeting time and our local bylaws. If you wish to address town meeting, step up to the microphones. There's one on each side of the stage here. Wait to be recognized. State your name and your address. Please keep comments to under two minutes, and you may approach the microphone a second time, but with only new information. And please keep these comments to under one minute. I will explain procedures as needed and will recognize requests for points of order. Motions to amend may be made, but must be reduced to writing prior to being debated. Questions of privilege raises issues affecting rights and privileges at town meeting. If your safety, dignity, or integrity, if the volume, temperature, noise interferes with your ability to hear, speak, or participate in town meeting, please yell out question of privilege. Please remain seated unless you are approaching the microphone to speak. Please do not move chairs. Please take conversations outside. I hope to continue to have a spirited debate.
Everybody turn off your cell phone.
I hope to continue to have a spirited debate and that the meeting both supports and challenges the issues that are presented. You may make a motion to call a question, but you cannot debate and then make the motion. Most importantly, please be respectful to everyone, and remember, it's okay to have a different opinion. Does everyone understand the rules? Maybe? I can't hear you. All right, good. Can everyone hear me? Okay. Does everyone know where the bathrooms are? Does everyone know where the exits are? Take a moment, take a peek. Ladies and gentlemen, we still have open seats up front. We may have to count votes. It's going to be hard if people are moving around. So if we can come fill in, I see about 12 seats up front. I just want to make an announcement that the Finance Committee has openings, Wage and Personnel has openings. So if you're interested in any of those positions, please contact me. Thank you. Open a motion.
Move that the following non-residents and non-registered voters be allowed to enter and address the town meeting. Kate Federoff, Town Council. Keith Hickey, Town Administrator. Matthew Darsh, Water Department Superintendent. Robert Monahan, Wastewater Department Superintendent. Jason Silva, Community Development Director. Carol McCoy, Finance Director, Town Accountant. Tina Betty, Human Resource Manager. Gloria Mitchell, Assistant Town Administrator. Maureen Clark, Assistant Assessor. Matthew Pennella, Conservation Agent.
Anyone like to be heard or debate? See and none. All in favor, say aye. Take it, you're the waterfront committee. Good evening.
Tyler Bouchard, 217 Parting Ways Road, Waterfront Committee Chair. Article number one, move. The town approve the alternate seat on the Kingston Waterfront Committee. Said alternate being empowered to act as a full committee member in the event of an absence of a full member, with said alternate being appointed by the Select Board.
Open to debate? Do you have any comments you'd like to make, sir?
Yeah, so as the waterfront committee, we'd like to add an alternate to be able to fill that seat if in the absence of a quorum. We also see as a great opportunity for another person to get involved, maybe as a stepping stone to becoming a full member in the committee. And we've seen interest from it for a number of years, even before my time. And so we're taking steps forward to just add more people that are involved heavily and for an eighth member to be able to step in as an alternate.
Would anyone like to be heard? Seeing nothing, I'll move the question. This is a favorable by the Board of Selectmen, four to one, and favorable by the Finance Committee, four to zero. This is a majority vote. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Article number two. Hold on one second. Just give me one second here. You just make sure you put the, that it's been changed. Okay, go ahead.
Just a quick note that the article, or the motion is going to be, there's a small grammatical change to it, so when you're reading along, you'll hear me say prior year. So move that the town appropriate the sum of $72,762.19 for the purpose of paying outstanding prior year bills from various town departments, and to meet this appropriation, the following sum be transferred as printed in the warrant. And said expenditures to be under the direction of the respective departments, and further the town accountant be authorized to allocate such sums.
Would you like to explain it? Would you like to?
Oh, there's nothing really to go with it. So I will read the description. So this article will pay outstanding invoices from prior years for services that have already
Would anyone like to be heard? This is a nine-tenths vote. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed?
Move that the town vote to transfer the unexpended balance of the special articles approved at prior town meetings to the general fund, undesignated fund balance as printed in the warrant.
Want to describe it?
This article will close out the unused and unneeded balances from projects that were approved at prior town meetings. The funds will be closed out to the general, undesignated fund balance.
Open for debate. Anyone want to be heard? There's two microphones up here. Anyone approaching? I don't see anybody. This is a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Moderator.
Good evening, sir. Could you just?
Good evening. Move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to convey property located on Maple Street, shown as Assessors Map 36, Parcel 33, for such consideration and on such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen deems in the best interest of the town, and to take such additional action as may be needed to effectuate the purposes of this vote, including but not limited to execution of instruments and documents to convey the property.
What are we trying to accomplish here?
Yes. This article will authorize the Board of Selectmen to begin the process of selling the property. The building has been used as cold storage by a number of departments in town since it was vacated by the fire department. There has been discussion that proceeds from any sums received from sale of the property would be used to build another storage facility, a new secure facility somewhere in town, on town-owned property. So it's, it's been vacant. It's, it's an eyesore to everybody there and time to do something about it. Thank you.
Open for debate. Questions, comments, concerns? Still have two open microphones. This is a two-thirds vote. And this is for four. It was favorable by the Board of Selectmen and favorable by the Finance Committee. Seeing no one approaching the microphone, so I'll take a vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries with minimal opposition. I saw two hands. Put that down. Yes, I, that passed by two-thirds. I saw, I didn't hear anything, but I saw two gentlemen in the back raise their hands opposing it. Got you, sir. Number five.
Move that the town vote to transfer $29,336 from free cash and raise and appropriate $62,407 to fund the agreement by and between the Town of Kingston and the Kingston Police Supervisors Association for Tona Order, our police lodge 064, association for FY21 and This article funds the first two years of the police supervisor's three-year contract.
Open for debate. Seeing no one approaching, if anyone's approaching, raise your hand. I see no hands. This is a majority vote. It's favorable by the Board of Selectmen, favorable by the Finance Committee. All those in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Minimal opposition. Article six.
Move that the town vote to extend the current collective bargaining agreement by and between the Town of Kingston and the International Association of Firefighters, Local 2337, by one year through fiscal year 23. What we're asking for this evening is, and what the union has agreed to, is to extend the two-year agreement that they've already signed, adding a year, which will match the timing of the other union agreements that we have signed with the other unions. And this would mean that they would, actually, there's only a slight adjustment for the captain's salary, otherwise it's the same terms.
Open for debate. Microphones are open. They work. And this was favorable by the Board of Selectmen and favorable by the Finance Committee, five zero for Board of Selectmen, four zero for the Finance Committee. Seeing no debate, I'll move it to a vote. This is a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. You ready for number seven? Let's go.
All right. Move that the town vote to transfer $44,147 from free cash to supplement the FY22 appropriations and revenue be expended for Fire Station One building repairs. All right. At some point since the station's construction in 1999, the gutters on the rear wall developed leaks that have allowed water to get behind the siding. Once behind the siding, the wood sheathing rotted and began to allow the siding and trim to come loose. Currently, there are areas of siding and trim that are bulging and must receive attention immediately. To properly repair the wall, the siding and trim must be removed and the rotted sheathing replaced. Once that is complete, new siding, trim, along with new gutters can be installed.
Open for debate? Questions? Comments? Nobody's approaching? Let's move the question. This was favorable by the Board of Selectmen, five zero, favorable by the Finance Committee, four to zero. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Number eight, please. Board of assessors? There you are. Introduce yourself to all these fine people.
Michael Martin, Chair of the Board of Assessors. Bear with me for one moment here. Motion that the town vote to raise the appropriate $25,000 to supplement the fiscal year 2022 appropriations and revenue sources be expended for additional cash associated with the statutorily required five-year revaluation. Essentially, what we're asking for is the additional funds that, out of the original budget that was put forward by the prior assessor, did not account for the personal property, which has $19,000. Will cost that amount to get the personal property reviewed and ready to go. The state has also put a few more requirements on the town necessary to complete the revale, so built into that would take care of that so that we'll be in conformity with the state and be able to get the assessments complete on that.
Do I have a second? Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Martin's wealth of knowledge, if you'd like to ask him anything. Seeing none, this was voted on by the Board of Selectmen, favorable, five zero, Finance Committee, four one, and Capitol Planning, three zero. Seeing no one at the microphones, no one approaching the microphones, this is a majority vote, and all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries with minimal opposition. Number nine.
Tyler Bouchard, 217 Parting Ways Road. Move that the town vote to appropriate $49,500 in the Waterways Improvement Fund to be expended to the purpose of purchase and installation of docks. So these docks are, the money that's used for these docks come out of the Waterways Fund, which is used, or which is taken from docks, racks, and mooring fees from the town landing, also half the excise tax for boating, the boating community. And this, these funds are used for improvements on the waterways and in our community on the river. Are the docks at this point have been there for 30, 40-plus years, it's a little hard to tell. They are at the end of their road, and we are looking to replace them.
Would anyone like to be heard? Questions? Comments? Seeing no one approaching the microphones. This was voted on and was favorable by the Board of Selectmen, five zero, Finance Committee, four zero, and the Capitol Planning, three to zero. Still seeing no one approaching. I will move this to a vote. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, and I'm still here for the next one.
Oh, go ahead. Number 10.
Also Tyler Bouchard, 217 Parting Ways Road. Move that the town vote to transfer $30,000 from free cash to be expended to the purpose of hiring an engineer and design and permit the existing boat ramp.
Can you explain?
The boat ramp has been in existence for, to our knowledge, 50-plus years. The original is possibly from the 30s. Currently, it is an asphalt boat ramp. It is our only municipal town boat ramp in the Town of Kingston. Asphalt has been deemed illegal to be used for environmental purposes for a number of years, so the idea of being able to repair it is not in, is not in the cards. If you look in your handout, you will see six photos of layers of asphalt that is currently floating away as we speak. This is a long time coming. This is a, really a position where public safety comes into view, when we have a ramp that is kind of in disrepair and is falling apart. So our hope is to take this engineering money and design and then take it and try to go and get grant funding for this. We, you know, we can't promise anything, but our, our plan is to go and get state and local grants to be able to fund this project to go forward. And in order to do that, we need a design and engineered plan to then go and fight for those grants, which we are very, very excited and willing to do. It's a long time coming. We, we need a new ramp. It's just, it's an infrastructure situation, and we are, we are looking forward to hopefully moving forward this.
Open it for debate? Can everyone hear me? Okay. We still have two microphones up here. This was favorable by the Board of Selectmen, five zero, the Finance Committee, three to one. This is number 10. It's a majority vote, and seeing no one approaching the microphone still, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? I got one.
Thank you.
Number 11.
Move that the town vote to transfer $30,000 from free cash to be expended for the purpose of structure repairs and installation of a new roof for the Font School. This article will fund the installation of a sheathing and installation of new roofing shingles for the entire roof. I can say more if they want.
No, 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 no. This was favorable by the Board of Selectmen, favorable by the Finance Committee, three to one, and Capitol Planning, three zero. Gentlemen, if you, sir, if you'd like to be heard, raise the microphone. Thank you, finally. Could you state your name and where you live, please?
James Davenport, Two Oak Street. I'm just curious, I've heard about the Font School. What is it? What's its purpose? What is it, you know, what's it for?
Maybe I'll read the thing I wasn't going to read after all, because I've got all that right here. Ready? It's perfect. The Font School is used regularly throughout the year by a number of groups, including the Garden Club, the Boys and Boy and Girl Scouts, and the Recreation Commission for summer camps, in addition to the Town Clerk, who used the facility for early voting in 2020. As you can see in the photos included in your special town meeting packet, the roof is leaking and causing damage to the building. Typically, most maintenance of this building has been done by volunteers and community service organizations that have been coordinated by our facilities director. Unfortunately, we found out recently that because of the height of the roof, the work cannot be done by those groups, which is why this emergency repair is coming before you tonight for funding. We estimate the current roof has been on the building for approximately 50 years. We've patched the roof in the past, but in order to keep the building in good condition, we need to remove and replace the roof, as well as waterproof the chimney. It's located near the library, for those of you who are curious where it is in town. Does that help?
Anyone else? Seeing nothing, we'll move it to a vote. This was, I don't know if I, I believe I said it, but favorable by the Board of Selectmen, five zero, Finance, three one, and Capitol Planning, three zero. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Article carries with minimal opposition. Who's got lucky number 12? This is Board of Assessors. Mr. Martin. You're slowing us down.
Good evening again. Move that the town accept Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41D as printed in the warrant. Essentially, what this will allow us to do is to adopt the, the state's laws that will allow us to increase the amounts that the seniors can get their exemptions for. So we need the authority from the town to mirror what the state does.
I'll open it for debate. Seeing none, this is favorable by the Board of Selectmen, five zero, Finance Committee, three zero. This is a majority vote. Still seeing nobody? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries with no opposition. Whoever's calling the second is doing a wonderful job. Thank you, sir. Number 13, Mr. Martin, you're close this time. Thank you.
Move that the town vote to accept Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 17E as printed in the warrant. What we're asking on this is that we be allowed to, again, parrot what the state laws are, reliding, allowing us to mirror what the state allows us to grant seniors for exemptions, and it allows us additionally to parrot and mirror their statutory cost of living index requirements. It allows us to give the maximum that we can. But again, we need your permission to do so.
This was favorable by the Board of Selectmen, five zero, favorable by the Finance Committee, four zero. Open it up for debate. Anyone wants to come up to these wonderful microphones and ask a question to Mr. Martin? He's available. Seeing none, I'll move it for a vote. It's a majority vote, favorable. I already said that. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Would you like to do number 14?
Just waiting for your permission, Mr. Moderator. Move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 17F as printed in the warrant. Knew that was coming. What we're looking to do here is, the town had already authorized this in our statute, but back in 2018, the legislature amended the state language. And Town Council, when we were looking at the prior clauses that we brought before you, indicated that while we have the authority, that he wanted to clean up the language to become in conformity with the new provisions of the law. So we're seeking to maintain what we have, but basically clean up and approve this language that'll keep us in conformity with what the state allows.
Probably no one's going to come forward. Board of Selectmen, five zero, Finance Committee, four zero. I'll open it up for debate if anyone has any... I'll open it up for debate, if anyone has any questions to Mr. Martin or anyone else about this article. God bless you. Seeing none, move it to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, no opposition. What you guys are all here for. Sixteen? Number sixteen. Water Department's request to obtain, nope, I skipped that, sorry, fifteen, additional Good evening, sir.
Move that the town vote to amend the approval authorized under Article six of the two thousand twenty-one annual town meeting as...
No, fifteen, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, fifteen, sorry about that. I was a little ahead of myself. Move that the town vote to transfer a total of seventy-five thousand dollars from FY twenty-one Water Surplus Revenue to fund the cleaning and pump replacement of the one eighty-six The information, the narrative there pretty much covers it. We need the money to clean the well. We had some issues prior, and if you look at the information there, the well is currently producing at about a forty percent reduction because it needs to be cleaned. And this money will come from free cash, so it's not like there's any additional tax or any additional money put on any of the ratepayers.
Open for debate. This was favorable by the Board of Selectmen, five zero, favorable by the Finance Committee, five zero. The debate's still open, anyone wants to come up? Seeing nothing, I'll move it to a vote. Fifteen is a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, no opposition. Article sixteen.
Move that the town vote to amend the approval authorized under Article six of the two thousand twenty-one annual town meeting as printed in the warrant. Some information that might help you decide how to vote. During normal years, the Jones River watershed is stressed. Kingston is limited by the DEP in how much water we can take from the Jones River watershed. Currently, we are limited to a total of one point three-three million gallons a day. All summer, we pump well over that amount. Today, we probably pump close to that amount, just about what we pump on a normal day in the fall and winter. Only a small part of Kingston is not in the Jones River watershed. It's in the southwestern part of town where Sacred Heart and Camp North, the Boy Scout camp are. Excuse me. That is the only area where we can develop a new well. We have done pump tests on the Boy Scout property. The quality and quantity of the water is very good, but withdrawals negatively impacted Darby Pond, which we learned during a prolonged pump test, so that that site is out. We can't use the Boy Scout property because of its adjacent to Darby Pond. Our next and likely last well has to be in this section of town. As luck would have it, there is a perfect piece of property in the area that is close enough to our Trackle Pond Treatment Facility, and the treatment plant was built to accept water from another well. The land in question is landlocked to the owner, which, with no available way to access it. The land is abutted by the Town of Kingston, Boston Edison, and the Northeast Wilderness Trust. If you look at the map that you have in the booklet, it doesn't identify where these different pieces are, but if you look at the map that is in your booklet, the Town of Kingston owns all of the land to the right of the Kellerher property. The Town of Kingston owns some of the land above it, and Boston Edison owns most of the land surrounding it, with one piece currently owned by the Northeast Wilderness Trust. We were in contact with the landowner who gave us permission to do a test well to check on the quality and quantity of water there. The test results were very positive. We reached out to the owner and asked her if she would sell the land to us. Before we could complete the negotiations, Mrs. Kellerher died, and her estate is being handled by an executor. We reached out to her, and she responded that it's a complicated estate, and that she could not sit down with us until after the New Year. We got an appraisal, and we are prepared to offer that amount to the estate. You might recall that at the annual meeting last year, we came to you to ask you for up to one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to buy that piece of land. Our appraisal was somewhere around ninety-eight thousand. We wanted to make sure that there was enough money when we sat down and negotiated with them, that if our property values increased, we would still have enough money available to purchase the property. This is not an attempt to lowball the property owner, or deny them any value of their property, but the clock is ticking. The infrastructure bill that was just recently passed and signed, actually signed today, I believe, allocates some nine billion dollars to Massachusetts for infrastructure improvements where water is prominently mentioned. There is also the American Rescue Plan Act, normally referred to as ARPA, money available to the town. If you were to go to ARPA portal and look at the Eligible Use of Funds section, you will notice that water and sewer infrastructure are the first items mentioned as appropriate use of the money. It said, "Infrastructure improvements by building or upgrading existing facilities." We want to build a new well. We are simply asking for the authority to do a land taking should negotiations fail. That can't happen without a vote by this body. If we have to wait until the spring annual meeting, we will have lost over five months, and other competing municipalities will get a head start on us. Frankly, it is doubtful that the executor will reject our offer, and very unlikely that we will initiate a land taking. We just want the permission to do that earlier in the process, if necessary, so that we can secure the land. We can't file paperwork with DEP or begin developing the well without control of the land. Finally, the Kingston Water Commissioners have had a reputation of being forward-thinking, planning ahead types of folks. A prominent Plymouth County official told me recently that Kingston Water Department is the best-run and managed water department in the county, specifically because we are forward-thinking, and we get there first when competing with other, with other municipalities. We are asking you to trust us, that we have a plan, know what we are doing, and have the ratepayers' best interests in mind.
Open it for debate. This was sixteen, sorry. There we go. State your name.
Tyler Bouchard, two seventeen Partingways Road. My question is partially to council and partially to Commissioner Goska. Has this, have we exercised eminent domain in the past? And if so, under what circumstances? And if so, will that be upheld by Attorney General and any other factions in that matter?
So, oh, no, wait. So I can't say that I remember in recent years us exercising eminent domain, although we have approved at several town meetings the option to exercise eminent domain. But I can't recall recently, I don't know if anyone on the Board of Selectmen can recall, a time when we had to, other than perhaps a road acceptance where it was an older road, and that's actually quite common, because you may have rights that aren't appearing in a title. So it's very common to take a road by eminent domain, but I can't recall taking a property recently.
For my part, I can tell you that since I've been a water commissioner, we've built several wells, we built a treatment plant, we built water towers, and in none of those cases did we take land, because we developed, we managed to purchase the land well in advance. The only, the problem here is the woman who owned the property died. She was prepared to sell us the land at the approved value that we got in an appraisal for, but she died, so it goes into probate, and that's why this gets dragged out. And all we're asking is, in the event that it gets dragged out too far, and we're, you know we're competing with other municipalities for some of this art money, that we would be able to take the land and then begin that process.
Ma'am, state your name, your address.
Sixty-eight Pembroke Street.
I didn't get you, sorry.
Michelle Santos, sixty-eight Pembroke Street.
Hi, Ms. Santos.
Um, hi. I was wondering if you have a plan or a process, like how long or how, how much time would pass before you took somebody's land?
I'm not really sure I understand the question.
I, I think what you're asking is, how long would you wait for the estate before you'd exercise the use of eminent domain?
We were expecting to negotiate with the estate and make an agreement. We're willing to wait as long as necessary. My concern is, they've told us that they're not going to even begin negotiating with us until the New Year, and if that doesn't work well, we're now going to be running into the annual town meeting, and if we don't get the warrant item to get the permission to take it by eminent domain by that meeting, we're going to kick it to a year from now of a special town meeting, and now we run into some issues with accessing the art money, because that runs out in twenty twenty-three.
Ms. Santos, did I, character, did I say that right? Is that what you're trying to ask?
Right, I wanted to know the timeframe. How much time would you wait before you made the decision?
We, we will wait until they say no, but we want the permission, if they say no, to then begin action right away, rather than wait till another town meeting to give us permission.
John Michael Font, sixteen May Avenue. Just a couple of questions. First off, could you clarify what you mean when you say that you're willing to wait as long as it takes, but at the same time, it seems as though we have a rather motivated seller that's willing to talk in a month and a half? Can you explain why you're seeking eminent domain when you just said that to us?
Yes, because we're, they were talking about sitting down and talking to us in a month and a half. They're not, they didn't say they would sign an agreement in a month and a half, they'd sit down and talk with us. If the talks don't go well, then my, our anticipation is, we would then have to take the route of doing an eminent domain. And again, if talks don't go well, and they don't go well, we find that out before, when it's too late to get a warrant item onto the annual town meeting, we're talking about a year from now, talking about the exact same, same topic, and the clock has been ticking for a year.
Thank you for your response. Just another question. As a town, do you feel that it's best practice to, I guess you could call it extend the courtesy to someone that's looking to sell their land, to give them an opportunity to sit down and talk before we move to take steps to take it?
Absolutely.
So why aren't we doing that?
Because we did sit down with the woman who owned the property, and we're in the process of negotiating the sale of the property, things were going quite smoothly, and then she died. And now it goes into probate, and it goes into an executor, and the woman that we had the verbal discussions with, the one that gave us permission for the pump test on the property, who was thrilled when she got the results of the pump test, because it meant that this was a piece of property that we really wanted, and she owns a piece of land that is essentially useless, because she can't get to it.
So you're, so could you just clarify, are you concerned that she now knows that we really want the property, and you're concerned that she might raise the price?
No, she's dead. The woman that owned the property died.
Okay, so...
You think the estate might raise the prices?
That's my, obviously, yeah.
Maybe, I think you've misstated it.
Yeah.
You think the estate might come in and bring up the price? Is that your question?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure why we're talking about someone that's already deceased. I mean, I think we should focus on the executor.
Again, I was giving you background into negotiations here, because we negotiated in good faith, we are still negotiating in good faith, we got an appraisal of the property, we asked you at the annual town meeting last year for the amount of money that the appraiser told us. We're not trying to lowball anybody, we're not trying to steal land from anybody, we're not trying to do anything other than what is prudent for the Water Department to plan ahead, so that we can make ourselves available for the art money and for the infrastructure money when it becomes available. We can't get any of that until we have control of the land that we're building the well on.
I have a question for...
So we're asking, what we're basically asking for is, should things not go well, we're looking for permission from this special town meeting to be able to then begin the process of eminent domain.
Thank you, we understand what you're looking for, we're trying to understand a little bit more about why. I have a question for legal counsel. I don't expect you to have a crystal ball, but I do wonder if you could somewhat speculate for us. If we were to seek eminent domain, does the other party have any right to appeal and initiate some sort of court proceeding to fight that?
So the answer is, a person can petition the court to determine whether or not just compensation was paid, so essentially fair market value, if they feel like the price paid and offered to be paid by the town was underbid, and then they would document that through appraisals, et cetera, et cetera.
A rather lengthy process, would you say?
Um, I mean, all litigation is somewhat lengthy, but...
Especially under COVID, it's even more lengthy now, huh? The courts are pretty tied up.
All right.
Right? I mean, I work there, so yeah, they are, I can tell you that. So I guess my next question is, this is not a legal question, it's rather, you know, I would say, a common sense type of question. Do you foresee it being a faster process to sit down and negotiate a sale and not have to go through a potential appeals process with eminent domain, or do you think it would be faster to open up eminent domain and potentially be exposed to going through the court system to answer to appeals processes?
I don't know if that's really a question. I mean, you have your opinion on, on what you'd like the town to do, and you can vote, and if you want to state what your opinion is, that's fine. He's already stated that he wants to use this as a tool if negotiations can't go forward till January.
Well, with all...
Just, we're not going to do a cross, I know you're in the court, so we're not going to just sit here and cross-examine people.
I understand that, with all due respect, he's spoken many times to the timeframe as, as part of his reasoning, so I'm trying to understand which method he feels would be faster. Is that not a fair question?
The fastest method would be to negotiate with the estate and come to an agreement on the amount of money that was, that we got in the appraisal, and that's what we're going to do. We're doing that.
Awesome.
We're not changing any of that, we just want, should that fail, having something else we can do before the annual town meeting.
Fantastic. I'd like to make a motion. You'll have to forgive me, I'm not sure of the proper motion, if it's to table the discussion or if it's, basically, I'm looking to automatically put this on for the next town meeting in the spring. I'm not sure how to word that.
Can we hold, hold your motion? The Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee haven't, they don't have favorable opinions of this. I would like to hear from them.
Sure.
And maybe everyone in the audience would hear what they want, and then I'll hear you after that.
We could table the motion to table the, whatever. I, I know what you're saying, we can do that, sure.
Thank you. Sir, go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, with your permission, I'd like to read a document. These are supporting documents furnished to us by the Water Department, and this document is an email from a lady by the name of Paula Pelletier. Paula Pelletier is the executor of the estate, and it's dated September twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one. I did not reply when I first, when I first read your email. I would, I would have been a very emotional response. Let me say, I am very disappointed and appalled by your approach. Now, this is to Matt Dasch, who's the superintendent of the Water Department, real nice guy. I do not appreciate being, it's very small. Threatened with eminent domain. I find that very unprofessional, unethical, and unacceptable. As you are aware, yes, as you are aware, Terry passed away very unexpectedly in two thousand twenty. Her estate assets are being dealt with in the probate court, and I should not have to justify our personal affairs to anyone, let alone a municipal department. As I had been told, as I had told you earlier, she owned other properties that in a financial drain to the estate, and that I need to deal with these first. Once these have been settled, I will look into Kingston properties. I do work full-time, and there is little, there's a little thing called COVID that has made handling this affair especially challenging, and has taken more time than normal to achieve any outcome. any outcome. I'm not sure you are aware of the fact that both the land and the water are limited in value, valuable, are limited invaluable resources, which have increased in value during the last two years. We will be discussing the Kingston properties with the family before the end of the year. After we have, after we've had our discussion, I would like to reach out to you. I still plan on honoring the Water Department's, which have first rights of refusal before the property is sold, either as a whole or individual parcel. I appreciate your reaching out. It has been, I have been educated. It has educated me on the fact that I should proceed with great caution in any future transactions with your department. Paula Pelletier. It would seem to me that Ms. Pelletier plans on honoring her agreement of first refusals to the town for that property and the water under it. I'm not sure what clock Mr. Koscik is talking about. The new year is only thirty-something, forty-something days away. Plus, this money that we're going to get, this billions of dollars, I hope it takes him a little bit more than a year or two to spend on us. So I think we've got time, and I don't think eminent domain is the procedure to follow. Thank you.
Hold on. I just want to hear from the Finance Committee, and then you can respond to both. And you're next, sir, I promise.
Hi, I'm Deb McLean, Chair of the Finance Committee. Four of us voted against this as we felt there was no need to use this approach at this time. The trustee sounded like she was in favorable, favor of doing this with us, and there's no immediate need for us to acquire this land. And for clarification, the Art Fund's actually, it's 2024. So we do have plenty of times, plenty of time to utilize that money.
You can respond, and then we have two more.
The email that the selectman read to you was an email sent by Matt Dosh, who was our superintendent, to the executive of the estate. And it was probably the sixth or seventh email we sent to them and had not received any replies until we mentioned the possibility of eminent domain. And then we got the email that the selectman read to you. Again, we are not intending to take this land by eminent domain unless it is the last and final alternative. We expect to negotiate with the estate. We expect that they'll accept our offer because it's landlocked land. This land did not go up in value because you can't use it. And our expectation is that we will come to an agreement that will be covered by the amount of money that you approved at the annual meeting. And I understand that she was upset, and she was upset because everybody gets upset when they hear the word eminent domain. Quite frankly, when I sat before the selectmen to explain this, that was something that stuck in their craw too. The whole concept of taking someone's land without their permission. All we're asking for is, in the event that things fail, that we can begin the process of purchasing the land before the annual town meeting.
Thank you, sir. Sir?
Andy Davis, 11 Crystal Drive. I think I live in the neck of the woods where this well's going in. Is that right, Mr. Koscik? And with the infrastructure money that we're getting, is there any chance that part of that project could be getting our little development on town water? Because, as you know, we've had this discussion, my water is not very good.
Quite frankly, depending on how much, is it, quite frankly, depending on how much money we got, absolutely. As you know, you and I have had conversations over the last 20 years. And it's high on my list of priorities. It is just not cost-effective right now for us to do that. Should there be an infusion of federal money, that changes the equation. So I can't promise you that we will, but I can tell you, Mr. Davis, that you know that I'll be pushing for it.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Good evening, sir. Can you state your name and your address, please?
Courtland Harlow, 31 Howlands Lane. Kingston often goes about things in crappy ways. This brings back a lot of memories in 2011, when my father was killed, when members of the town, including town officials, were attempting to extort money from my family. My father died in the process. The day before he died, I never seen my father cry, ever. He'd been kidnapped in third world countries, or he was kidnapped in third world countries, put in front of a firing squad, third world countries, seeing many horrific accidents. Never seen him cry except the day before he died. He couldn't understand what was going on. Didn't understand why members of the town were doing this to him and to the family. I couldn't understand either. He died the next day in a car accident. I know he was stressed beyond belief.
Sir, do you have anything, I'm sorry about your father. Do you have a specific question or what you think?
But Mr. Koscik's doing is wrong. I heard him say in the selectman meeting, he was using eminent domain as leverage to bring someone to the bargaining table. Someone has died in their family. It's not an easy process. Mr. Koscik was like, oh, this is the smallest part of their estate. It's simple to do. How would he know? Estates can be very complex. And even so, someone died. And the lack of compassion is horrific. And I oppose this. And as I say, when my father died, people know what was going on, and they didn't speak up. Some did, including Mr. Armstrong. I give him tremendous respect. So much so that at his, I gave my father's eulogy. I spoke of the courageous acts of Mr. Armstrong. And I hope this body speaks up and says no to this, because it's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Jean Coleman, 20 Howlands Lane. I do have a point of clarification that I just want to ask. It says it's a 1-4 favorable vote for both the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee. And I just wanted to clarify that that is an unfavorable vote.
Unfavorable vote.
Unfavorable vote. So, ladies and gentlemen, both our Finance Committee and our Board of Selectmen are against this article. And everyone can read what Mr. Aruda just read to us. It's a pretty heartfelt email where it sounds as though this family was kind of blindsided, and they're trying to get the estate in order. And we've had a very quick night so far, and I think we will after this. But this would be an article that I would be opposed to, and I would encourage everyone else to vote no on this as well. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, just so the record's clear, this was, one Board of Selectmen was favorable, four found it unfavorable. One Finance Committee found it favorable, one was, four were unfavorable. This needs a two-thirds majority, and that would allow the taking through eminent domain. If it doesn't pass, that means that can't be used. It would just be normal negotiations with the estate. Does everyone understand how we're voting here? Sir, did you have another motion or? Okay, so Mr. Faunt withdraws his motion to table. So a yes vote would allow the taking, or potential taking, a no vote would not allow it. So all those in favor of giving the Water Department that power, say aye. All those opposed? Article fails. By two-thirds majority voice. Number, Article 17?
Carl Pike, Shore Drive. Move that the town vote to transfer a total of $1,619,944.44 from FY '22 wastewater revenue to fund repayment of a short-term debt service expense payment paid by the general fund.
Can I make a friendly amendment? It's FY '21 in our motion?
Twenty-two is the correct.
Twenty-two is the correct, okay.
As a form of explanation here, in a $1.6 million, one-year bond anticipation note ban was issued in October of 2019 to fund engineering and design effort on the wastewater treatment plant expansion project. A new $1.6 million, one-year ban was issued in October of '20 to pay off the original one-year ban. This year, a significant new sewer customer connection fee was paid in full earlier. This meant that the second one-year ban could be paid off without issuing any replacement debt, saving the town approximately $35,000 in interest expense and bond council and financial advisor fees. This article now seeks authorization to utilize $1.6 million of the current year wastewater department revenue generated by the connection fee payment to repay the general fund advance, which was authorized by the selectmen to pay off the $1.6 million ban in October.
Does this save money?
Yes.
Okay. It's all I wanted to know. That was my question. I'll open this up for debate, if anyone would like to be heard. Seeing none. Board of Selectmen favorable 5-0, Finance Committee favorable 5-0. This is a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So now the funding. Moving on to Article number 18.
Move that the town vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund undesignated reserve the sum of $805,000 for the acquisition by negotiated purchase of a parcel of land of approximately 45.66 acres as printed in the warrant, and further to authorize the town to apply for and accept grants to offset such purchase price as may be available, and further to accept any and all easements necessary to provide or to increase access to the parcel, including but not limited to easements for ingress, egress, and parking. I would like to invite Kingston Conservation Agent Matt Pennella to come up and to help me present this unique article that's before us tonight.
Thank you. All right. It might run a bit long. I wanted to make sure everybody was informed. Article 18 seeks town meeting approval for funding of a Community Preservation Act project. Louder? Louder? Better? All right. Article 18 seeks town meeting approval for funding of a Community Preservation Act project specifically to purchase the 46-acre Frederick Carson parcel off of Winthrop Street, preserving its existing open space and creating the new Blackwater Memorial Forest Conservation Area. The Carson land is protected Chapter 61 agricultural land that will otherwise be developed. Chapter 61 is a state program that helps protect open space from being developed. In return for the benefit of reduced tax rate, the owners gave Kingston the right of first refusal to buy the land when it is to be sold or converted. In this case, the right of first refusal was triggered by a plan from a private developer who wishes to buy and convert this land from its current agricultural and open space use. The town has the opportunity to purchase the property now through this article. The property would be purchased using CPC funds, which come from the Community Preservation Act. CPA funding accumulates annually, and the CPC reviews applications and approves projects that are for the betterment of the community. The CPC voted unanimously to approve this project. This project would not require raising taxes or borrowing money in order to fund the town's purchase of this land. Through this article, the CPC would fund the full $800,000 purchase price, which matched the developer's purchase agreement. The appraisal contracted by the CPC valued this land at $900,000. In addition, the Conservation Commission applied for and received a $400,000 Massachusetts land grant or local acquisition for natural diversity to support the town's conservation efforts on this project. This grant money will be returned to CPC as per the language of the article. So right off the bat, we've already dropped the purchase price to CPC by half. The Frederick Carson land is approximately 46 acres, consisting of mostly pine and oak woodlands. There's also a complex wetland system there, leading from a natural bog down through a retired agricultural bog, which outlets through Sampson's Brook into the Blackwater Swamp, Blackwater Pond, and Stony Brook and the Jones River beyond. This property contains the headwaters of that whole system, consisting of natural springs and the bog that feed cool, fresh water into the brook. The wetland ecosystem on this property contains an example of an acidic peatland bog community, which is a state-listed priority natural vegetative community. Kingston only has a few small examples of this type of habitat, with the others being contained within Smelt Pond, Muddy Pond, and Goose Pond. These resource areas are known to support rare species, but we haven't had time to confirm if any are present on site. As an employee of the town, I and many of the town's committee members have been able to walk this property on different occasions. For those of you who have not previously visited this land, we feel that you'll be impressed with how beautiful the land and the existing trail network is. There's approximately 40 feet of elevation change through the property, and there already exists a maintained trail network that goes around the wetlands and surrounding woods and passes through some really great habitat where you can see some great species. This is one of the most gorgeous properties that we have in Kingston. There aren't a lot of opportunities left in this part of town for preserving a parcel of this size with such high quality of open space, habitat, and opportunity for passive recreation. The Conservation Commission is interested in this property because it has great benefits to the town and community as open space, and there's great habitat there for a lot of species. The water that springs from this land and creates the bog reservoir flows through the wetlands and delivers cold, clean water that's important to the ecosystem of Blackwater Pond, which is an even rarer habitat as it contains the southernmost black spruce bog found in New England. This cool, clean water is also important to Stony Brook, the Jones River, and the cold-water fish that live in them. Ultimately, the protection of this watershed is valuable to the bay and the shellfish beds as well, and this protection is best achieved through conservation. In order to maximize benefit to all members of the town, we're planning to create an off-street parking area so that anyone from around town will be able to safely park here and have good access to this land. If this article is approved, the town in turn will accept a donated or deeded access easement through an agreement with a neighboring family along Winthrop Street. There will be room for driveways for entrance and exit, and a parking area roughly 50 feet by 100 feet off of Winthrop Street, aimed at providing parking for five or six cars within visible distance from Winthrop Street. We've met with the Building Department for initial review of the easement plans and parking and access. Town Council has prepared the easement agreement, and the offering family has signed the papers. The Conservation Commission voted unanimously in favor of this project. The Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee also voted unanimously in favor of this project. Thank you.
We're open for debate. Are you coming forward, sir? Good evening. Could you state your name and your address?
Michael Capola, 10 Sheridan Drive. So the only questions I really have for the town would be, when we accept the easement to the property of, with Winthrop Street, who would be in charge of creating that easement? Would it be the street trees and parks? Would it be subbed out? Because that's also a cost that, I don't know, the CPC would cover, making that easement, making the parking lot, clearing that path, clearing the parking lot. Who would be in charge of maintaining the road when it gets dirty? Because obviously, there's going to be litter, there's going to be debris. And as well as, sign blank on the other part. I don't know if somebody has answered that while I think of what I lost. My train of thought.
You've still got time with the answer. If you come up with it, you can follow up.
So the way the easement is currently kind of situated and laid out, there's actually a, not, like, it can be cleared pretty easily. It's not old, established growth of trees. And we've had some people step forward to volunteer services as far as clearing the land. There's a path that would be able to be coming in and out of it. Minimum, minimal amount of work would actually have to be done to make this a parking area that can be used. Beyond that, you asked about the ongoing maintenance of the parcel?
Yes.
There's enough, Conservation Agent has expressed to me that there's existing resources available through the Conservation Department to be able to continue ongoing maintenance of this parcel in addition to our other open space parcels in town.
Okay. And then the other part that I had was, there, I know this is a 46 acre, roughly 46 acres. There's also another additional 1,800 acres already owned by the town in this, including the 200 acre that's attached to Silver Lake. I know that they said that this would be great. I know that they said that this would be great for the community to go out there and walk, but I also see that if we sell this to a developer, we can also have annual income of another $500,000 roughly with, depending on how many houses and developments we put in there, that would be taxed for, income tax, as well as possibility of excise tax for vehicles that are parked there. I just see that, like, maybe we can make, that the town would have more opportunity with that money into future developments, maintaining, you know, the infrastructure that we already have, or as well as purchasing newer equipment for, you know, fire, police, street trees and parks, water, wastewater, instead of having to just repair older equipment. So that is a...
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Is that a statement or a question?
A kind of a question as well as, sorry, I'm trying to form the question.
No, it's fine. So, it's hard to speak in hypotheticals, but just generally speaking, yes, there would be an increase in tax base when you build that many residential units, but there would also be an increase in costs to the town. And to say where that would fall, it's really premature to say that, but you can't really say, look at it in a vacuum and say there would be this increase of X amount of dollars, because definitely a development of that size has costs associated with it. But we have to go beyond that, because this is a growing community, and we have to accept that, and housing is needed in this community. But what's unique about this parcel is as a potential conservation acquisition, it is a very unique resource. It's been recognized as the state, by the state, as a unique resource, and that's why we were able to acquire the land grant. So it's something that we have one opportunity to secure for the future generations of Kingston residents, to be able to keep this safe and preserved and to be able to be enjoyed. So I think it's invaluable to be able to do that. It's one of those choices that we can make tonight that we will look back at in the future and say, we're really proud that we did it. That's where...
Thank you. Sir?
Andy Davis, 11 Crystal Drive, again. Can somebody just let us know if we do make this purchase, how much money is left in the CPC, like, in the overall buckets and the overall number? Because I know we have some projects coming forward in the spring, so I'm just wondering what the numbers are.
How much money is left in that fund?
Dan Shropshire, 9 Green Street, Chair of CPC. Answer the question. We have, as of July 2021, ending balances of about $2 million. About 1.7 of that was in undesignated funds, where the money would come from for this effort. About $300,000 of that remain in the other funds, which is community housing, historic resources, and then open space. We also just received another $100,000 two days ago, or actually yesterday, from the state, as part of the annual funds, so that bumps that up to about 2.1 million total. So with the land grant, again, this would take about $400,000 out of that total, leaving us still with about 1.5 million left. There's also, I should mention, 400 in outstanding balances, 200 of which were issued in this last year's town meeting, 200,000 which were outstanding from previous projects. So the total available balance is somewhere probably around over a million dollars, 1.1 million, after this goes through, if it goes through.
Still open for debate or discussion, statements, comments, concerns? Just ready to vote?
Can I move the vote?
Yes, I'm just going to move the vote. We're going to take out our cards for this one, and we're going to count this out of abundance of caution. And please, this is, we're going to do this, there's a lot of people standing, so, if the middle can be open, so, anyone who's in my line of sight, we're going to count the standing cards first. People standing.
You're going to stop?
Well, you guys, yeah, just, I don't want people moving. But...
Can I say one thing?
Yeah. Folks, what we're going to do is, we're going to count the people standing first. So if we can get you into three different groups. This group over here, move that way. Once it's counted, we're going to move you back. We're going to count this other section that's standing over here, and then the gentleman in the red jacket. You see, yep, right there. If you guys could just move slowly over here, we'll have three different groups that we can count by hand. We'll report those, and then we'll count the inside. All right? So all those in favor of purchasing the land, take out your card and raise it. Nope, not, if you're seated, keep it down. If you're standing, take out your card. If you're standing, push back away from the seated people, please. There we go. Folks sitting on, over here, by the sound?
Anyone sitting over there?
Yep. Put your cards up. If you're voting, if you're voting in favor, right by Mr. Davis, take your cards out. How many do you have? How many you got so far? What do you got? How many?
Three, seven.
Okay. Yeah, how many you got so far? Seventy-four in favor? Okay. All right, the same group that's standing?
Don.
No.
No? Okay, okay, we'll do the seating. All right, if you're standing, just back up. All those seating, if you want the town to purchase the land, take out your card and raise them.
He's not going to count. You're going to count seating.
Folks, folks, we got to count. Just give us two minutes, please. What do you got?
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three?
I should have counted them both. It would have been a lot easier to count them. Yes, aye.
You'll never be asked again.
You're fired.
I forgot myself, I had one.
Did you get the?
Both. Yes. About four, four over there.
Hundred and twenty-four?
We asked Bruce if he got the Board of Selectmen.
Any, you've been counted. Anyone opposing it, raise your cards. I see one. Article passes. One opposed. Article nineteen. Heath Hamburg, 214 Indian Pond Road, Vice Chairman of your Capital Planning Committee. Move that the town vote to amend its general bylaws by amending the Capital Planning Committee bylaws as printed in the warrant. Thank you, Andy. The purpose of this article is to update the capital planning bylaw that originally went into effect in 1988 and was only amended in 1993. The committee determined that the bylaw needed to be revised to allow the committee, as well as the administration, to have a smoother capital planning process. The summary of proposed changes, excuse me, is detailed in your handout on page 24 and includes a clarification, a clarified definition of capital that... Quiet, please! ...that specifically includes land, buildings, and infrastructure. Language to establish that only the Capital Planning Committee may present the capital planning article at annual and special town meetings. Extension of the deadline to add new projects to the upcoming capital plan from October 1st to January 1st, as well as an increased minimum cost of items to be reviewed from $10,000 to $25,000, as the $10,000 number has been in place for over a quarter century. Open for debate?
Second.
We got a second, but I'll take another one. This was nineteen, majority vote, it was 5-0. Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee were 3-2. And it is open for debate if anyone has a question, comment, concern. Finance Committee, anybody? Okay. Hold on, I see someone walking.
Jacqueline Ebony, 17 Tarquill. Can I hear from the Finance Committee?
Hear!
Yep. Folks, we still have two more articles. Can you please keep the noise down in the back? Finance Committee, would you like to address your vote?
Do you want to know why two people said no? Basically because they had suggested edits and wanted clarification on various parts and could not support it as it read at this point.
Can you hear her?
No. Okay. Yes, I'll talk up. So basically, they suggested edits and wanted some clarification on various aspects of it and could not support the article as it was written.
Move for vote. All those in favor of making the changes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's try that one more time. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
Motion carries. Minimal opposition. Hi.
Can I say my name?
Please.
Tree Kaharich, 5 Post Court.
Nice and loud, please.
Tree Kaharich, 5 Post Court. Move that the town vote to amend its general bylaws by amending Chapter 4, General Provisions Governing Officers, Boards, and Committees as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Second. Can you give a description of what you're trying to accomplish here, ma'am?
Yeah, so over the last year, my husband and I have been very active in the community, and we've been able to be as active as we've been, because a lot of the meetings were online and we could participate online. Many weeks, we went to many meetings, and some nights, we went to more than one. So it's more than just a convenience. When I was looking into this article, a lot of people said that this would help them. Some people can't drive anymore. Some people don't drive at night, and they rely on other people to take them to meetings, so they would, this would afford them the ability to make decisions on their own if they can participate in meetings online. There are people who take care of older parents or young children, and they cannot attend the meetings in person. In addition, some town employees have mentioned that they would like to keep informed on projects, and it's really difficult for them to be at the town three or four nights a week. I believe it's in the best interest of us as residents to have more people be able to participate in the process and also to have the process be transparent. I want to clarify that this is a no-cost article. Right now, we have three rooms that can provide remote participation, two in the townhouse and one in the senior center. The town also has 10 Zoom licenses. I also want to clarify that this does not require all boards, commissions, and committees to meet at the townhouse. For example, the Water Department, they allow for online participation, and they meet in their own building, and that works just fine. So in summary, I hope you support this. I'm here for questions.
Can you speak to this?
Yeah.
Hi, Tree. So I'm Sheil Vaughn, 7 Frank Street, Kingston, Mass. I'm putting on my Chair of the School Committee tonight to be in favor of this. I just wanted to read what I wrote to Tree, just so people would know. I'm in support, as a School Committee Chair and parent, it would give parents, teachers, administrators, and the committee the ability to be involved in the conversations, and the participation has been much higher than we were in person. Also, it is very helpful for minutes of meetings as well to be recorded. To be able to have people go back to listen and to be able to see other meetings as they've been done, it makes transparency for the committees so much better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk?
Paul Gallagher, 8 Longview Drive. Although I understand and appreciate the concept of all of this, it is not an easy task. There's a great deal of infrastructure that's going to be needed, understanding that we have three rooms that may be able to access. We have a great number of committees, and every one of them will have to record and be accessible to people online. That being said, every meeting that is recorded will now need to be saved and filed with the town clerk's office. I don't know where the storage for that's going to go. I just think that, you know, I understand and appreciate, you know, being able to let everybody see it and hear it and all that other stuff, but, you know, are we going to spend money for countless numbers of meetings so that people can call in for the Memorial Day Parade Committee, the Agricultural Committee, although they're all very important? I just think that this is not just a simple task that, because Corona has given us the opportunity to see how it works, that it's going to work successfully with all of these additional committees. Thank you.
I'd just like to clarify that the link to the Youtubes can be placed on the website, and I don't think that's a high-cost effort.
If you don't mind, if you don't mind. I would need to check with the state. I don't believe that I can quantify that I'm saving records if I have to go to YouTube to get them. I have to store them as town records in the town clerk's office in the town hall. I can't depend on YouTube and whether or not a committee member that taped it actually uploaded it to YouTube. So there's, like I said, there's a lot more infrastructure to this than what actually meets the eye.
Yes, sir.
Andy Davis, 11 Crystal Drive, again, Chair of the Recreation Commission. I know with COVID, I know at our meetings, if we have somebody come in and attends the meeting, everybody has to sign in, so we have an attendance list. And I know during COVID, even if people were signing on online, I think that was to be kept track of. Is that correct? Mr. Gallagher shakes his head, yes. Do we have any idea how many more people attended meetings because you had access to them online? Did anybody quantify that? Because I just know, I've been on the Recreation Commission for, I don't know, 10, 12 years now, and I can count on my thumb the number of meetings where we've had maybe six, seven, eight people come in? Like, the KYSO guy comes in, the Eagle Scouts come in every once in a while, but like, nobody comes to our meetings, and I don't know if we even had anybody watching them during COVID. So I, I'm with Mr. Gallagher. I just think it's, we don't have a lot of people going to a lot of these meetings, like selectmen, things like that, like you said, agricultural and this and that. How many boards and commissions are there in town that would have to do this? And like you said, storage and things? I just, I just don't agree with it. Thank you.
Tyler Richard, 217 Partings Ways Road. I have two questions. One is, what are the state laws of the... One is, what are the state laws at the current, I'm the Chair of the Waterfront Committee, so I should probably know this a little deeper, but what are the current laws that we have in place for the state for COVID as far as participation for citizens versus committee members or board members? That's my first question, I do have a follow-up.
Is that directed to me?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
So pursuant to the open meeting law, there is a remote access policy and it restricts really committee members or board members from actively participating remotely. So what the law requires is that the CEO of the town meeting, the Board of Selectmen, adopt a remote access policy. And a majority of members have to be physically present. I mean, all of that is different for COVID. So, so under COVID, they did emergency legislation. It was recently extended because it did work well. And the state is considering modifications to the open meeting law to allow remote participation in a more robust way than they did in the past. But we have yet to see what that legislation looks like and how it would roll out, if it does roll out. So if we go back to pre-COVID times, which we expect to at some point shortly, you would have to have a quorum of committee and board members present, including the Chair.
So in the follow-up to that, there's a good chance that we have some time before we have to make a decision on this because the state is in kind of limbo at this point, right? We are still allowed to operate on that level of remote participation.
Yeah, so the emergency legislation was extended and we can, everyone, including all committee members, can actively Zoom in or WebEx in or however it's done.
So, and then this is, my main point is, as somebody who does, I live on Zoom every day and I totally think that the future is much more remote and I believe that having internet access, not packed TV, because a lot of people do not have Comcast or Verizon, is extremely important. And I'd actually like to see that now, I'd like to see that livestreamed. It's the remote access to be able to speak through that, that I don't know if committees and boards are fully ready for that at this time. I know, I'm bringing my gear in from my workshop, from my office, to be able to try to do that. It's a really hard thing to manage right now because we don't have anything in place right now for infrastructure. We don't have, we don't have people that can help us do that during a meeting. It's me that's doing it. And I, and I'm happy to do it during COVID because it's very important and these are very important matters. I think, I would love to see the town take a little bit of time and come up with kind of an infrastructure package, which is, there is some in here and maybe a game plan that really puts us in a place so committees and chairs, especially small committees, can then come to an agreement and say, we can, we can do this successfully. What I don't want to see is a mandate put in place that we're fumbling around with for months and months and months and months in breaking open meeting law because we just, because people just don't know. And there's a lot of chairs and a lot of people in committees that don't understand how this technology works. I think we need training and I think we need to come up with a little deeper infrastructure because we need, we need more rooms than what we're talking about now. There's a lot of committees, there's a lot of boards, you know, we don't, we meet, we don't meet any of those and we were hoping to meet in the Town Hall more. I'm just, in my thoughts is, I like the idea of it, but I also, I really think that this could be thought out thoroughly and I think this would be voted on favorably in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Jim Franklin, fifty-three, Winthrop Street. I think, I think what we were able to do tonight kind of shows you what can be done if you have access, right? None of us would have probably attended that meeting if it wasn't on Zoom when they had the public hearing through the selectmen back in February. So I'm in support of this. I'm also the Vice Chair of the Conservation Commission. So I can tell you that when people can get there for these tough meetings that mean a lot to them, mean a lot to their homes, their neighborhoods, their community, you get more people. And I think that's important and maybe it'll take us a little time to get the best way to get this achieved, but ultimately, I think that we need to support this type of a citizen petitioned article because how else is it going to get there if we have two boards that already decided that they didn't want to put it online anymore? So from that perspective, I think everybody should vote for this article.
And, and one other point of clarification while Ms. Vaughn approaches the mic. Ms. Emberg wanted me to clarify that when I was speaking, I was talking about committee and board members as opposed to the public. There are not restrictions on people either watching via Zoom or attorneys, for example, calling in via phone under the open meeting law.
So it's Sheila Vaughn, seven Frank Street. I just wanted to clarify that our School Committee is meeting until April first, which is the rule right now for open meeting law to be virtual. Well, hopefully to go longer for that. I've been in some meetings regarding the open meeting law and having the transparency. As, as people were speaking about, you know, having a lot on their plate, I have three children, a three-year-old, eleven-year-old, a fourteen-year-old. I'm on two committees, the School Committee Chair, and I'm also a selectman. I do my meetings from home at Google Meet. I hide in closets, I do what I need to do so I can have transparency for people to be able to see my meetings. I can tell you that School Committee used to be, and I can tell Car Park is right here, used to be empty. There would be nobody in that room but the administrators and us. And now there are fifty to a hundred people on our meetings constantly. So I am very much in favor of doing this. We do a Google Meet. It doesn't have to all be Zoom. It doesn't all have to be in one type of way that you do it. There are many different ways to tape a, a meeting. We just need transparency and be able to be able to see the different meetings that are happening. I would love to see the Recreation Commission, if I was able to actually see it on a meeting and be able to watch it. If I could do capital planning, anything that would be able to be watched and I can go online on our new website and be able to click on it and watch it, I would do that. Now, mind you, I'm a little crazy, I keep all of the committee and calendars on my, on my phone, but I'm just telling you, I'm a busy person too, but I, I'm able to get my meetings and be able to upload them so people can see them.
Thank you. Ma'am, I'll let you respond, just, hold on, one more.
Oh, sorry. Megan Hickey, Winthrop Street. My question is, if, right now, they're not being recorded, I guess it's for Mr. Gallagher. You said if they are recorded, they have to be stored, but currently, the Recreation Commission currently isn't recorded, but they have minutes. Are those minutes kept? Why wouldn't those minutes be enough instead of a recording? Why would you have to keep the recording as well as the minutes?
You want to take it?
Anybody?
So, so under the public records law, the way meeting minutes work is they're the record of the meeting. And once you've created and approved those minutes, you can discard the recording. So, so that's actually, it's, it's not a storage issue unless it's for the purpose of giving a more transparent record. So it, it doesn't have to be saved in the Town Clerk's Office. I won't speak to the unfunded mandate of the infrastructure that may be needed and for computers or whatever the technology is, I can't speak to that. But for the purposes of storage of data, once the minutes are created, those recordings can be destroyed.
Okay, I guess I-
If, if you don't mind, Megan, I will also say that people need to understand and I'm not, I'm not trying to, I agree with the concept the whole way, but we've just heard from a couple of people that they talked about how busy they are and how it's nice to have this. We have, in the town of Kingston, always, always had issues with receiving minutes from every single committee. And I can tell you that when we do receive those minutes, they're asked for quite a bit. And I'm telling you right now that if we record them, although state law doesn't mandate that we save them, we can discard them, I'm going to tell you that people don't want to see them. People are going to request them. People are going to challenge whether or not the minutes are accurate, reflective against the recordings. It's just the way it is. So like I said, I'm, I'm in favor of the concept, but there's a great deal more infrastructure and planning that needs to go on in something like this than to just mandate today that everybody has to start recording and allowing for participation. It's going to be a great deal of work. And like I said, people, some committees are very good about dropping their minutes and posting their minutes. And, you know, we have the new website where people are allowed to and have access to post their own minutes. The problem is that they don't always come in and there is always challenges to the minutes that we have. So, you know, like I say, it might not be a state mandate, but we'll eventually need it because we'll have challenges here in town.
But, so it's just, it's not completely necessary that we keep those recordings, right?
No, it is not completely necessary. It's not a state mandate that we do. I'm not going to tell you right now, but I would guess that once this COVID is over and the state has all these new policies and procedures, we will be keeping them. That will be part of it.
I understand that. I just, I, I agree that this was a huge, the reason why we were able to save that Winthrop Street land is because we were able to access all of these meetings. I watch Recreation Commission, I've watched CPC, I watch Conservation Commission, I watch Selectmen's Meeting, all from home, all safely, all of us. It is a huge, huge benefit for the town for us to do this. And if we already are recording minutes, then I don't understand if we have the minutes. Sure, maybe not a hundred percent of them, but I, I think that this would be a good idea.
If I could just add one more thing to that, is that I understand that people are appreciative of being able to have access to these things. And we're talking about the purchase of forty-five acres-
Sure.
-of, of conservation land. There was huge participation, there were a lot of people calling in, but, and, and there was, there was participation in some of the Selectmen's Meetings for that, but that was because it was one big issue. We don't always have these one big issues that everybody's following. So, you know, you're going to be, you're going to be requiring minimal discussion by certain and specific committees to have to be recorded and have access to it when typically the participation by the residents is only when there's controversy or some big impact to themselves. So, you know, go from there.
I agree, but I think a lot of that is issues with getting there and fitting it into their own schedules where you can pop your computer on your table, listen while you cook dinner, listen while your kid goes to karate, listen while one kid comes home from soccer. I understand, but I, I think the benefits outweigh the negative. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Dan Shropshire, nine, nine Green Street, again, Chair of the CPC. I think, again, I agree completely, great idea. I think the transparency is absolutely excellent. I think there's been more participation. I think that for all those reasons, it's a great idea. But I would say, as a chairperson of a committee, it's very hard enough just to get a quorum on some nights and have routine meetings, which we only do once a month. And if there are technical glitches or issues where we can't actually hold the meeting because we can't get the Zoom to function or because the internet's down, it could and will potentially drag out our meetings to be longer and not be able to conduct business and that's my concern with it. So I would like to say that, I mean, we're going to continue at our committee to have open meetings through Zoom or through GoToMeeting, just because it's a good practice. So we're going to keep doing it and I would rather change this into a recommendation now until the state comes forward with better rules and regulations on how we do it and how we implement it and the town has more time to figure it out. Then we could do it in a way that's systematic to make sure that we're covered. But in the meantime, I'd say, let's just keep doing it as a good practice and recommendation, which we will do. And then that way, it's sort of a win-win. I, like I said, I'm afraid that if we implement this now, I could actually see this harming business from us not being able to conduct things because of technical issues, because we don't have IT people at the meeting, it's just us. So that's my recommendation, but I do appreciate the, because I completely agree with what you're saying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I understand what you're saying, but some boards and committees have decided not to allow remote participation and some large and important boards and committees. So I appreciate that you continue to do it and this is why I want it to be required, so that they all do it and that the residents have an opportunity to attend these things when they can't actually be there for a number of reasons. We've done this for the last year. We've done it already, so we know it's possible. So I'm just asking that we continue to do it.
Yes, sir. Mr. Moderator, move the motion. Okay. There's no one left anyway, so all those in favor of passing this petition to have the town record meetings, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Take your cards out. Yep, I got it. If you're standing, could you just come in with your cards up? All those in favor, take your card out, hold it up, and please don't move if you're standing. You are, you got all this. You're doing great. Take the whole right side, including those standing. The whole right side. Yes. Yes. All those in favor, hold your card up on the, thank you. Twenty-seven? Twenty-seven. Twenty-seven. Did you count them? All those opposed, can you take your card out and hold it up? Well, he's going to, I know. I'm sorry, Mary. I'll fix it next time. And you, you got the state, those people on the border? Okay. What you got? Thirty-nine. Did you get the Finance Committee? What's it, thirty-nine? Thirty-nine, so that's, I have- Seventy-one, eighty-one, seventy-six? Eighty-six, seventy-one? Eighty-six, seventy-one, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we're at the end of the meeting. I'm still looking for someone for wage and personnel, please contact me, it's an important position in the town. Please have a happy holidays. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second? All those in favor? Goodbye.